Go work meeting. Um, council business review of meetings, agenda items. Can this into like two point four, three point six and two point seven? The issues with that?
Nope.
Future agenda items?
I have one I just want to mention that will be coming to you in January and I want to mention it now because you can actually see it now. I've asked a lot to put together a staff report and a map of the Christmas decor that's up on our street poles. And to have some conversations about how much that's costing us in resources and supplies. So take a look as you drive around the city. Make mental notes so we come back in January that you'll be able to speak to that.
Thank you. Otherwise I would probably have said at that meeting. What are we talking about? Okay, anybody else? Is Lauren on?
Yes.
Yeah, he's on. Um, one thing, uh, Chief and I witnessed, um, a possibility, can we get an EV cart that can go out with like the DARE program or even event staff outdoors or something that is transmittable? Or you're.
We're going to talk about getting a speaker that's specific to that computer. So that he can bring it in if we have a failure in the.
These facilities aren't geared up for those.
Yeah, so we've had some troubles with that, so. Probably get him some sort of remote speaker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that where you can just plug and play and roll in.
Well, every one of the elementary's and you just mentioned they should be great because they're newer, but not one of them has worked.
Yeah.
Wow. Not one, so. We'll figure it out.
Good idea.
Use your air.
Well, the police do for sure, so. We just sit.
Good future agenda, anything else? Twenty point three council discussion of future citizens.
Jared, I don't have anything.
Go, go ahead, Lauren.
Uh, Harriman cross-country took third in the nation. I'd like to bring them in. Their cross-country team took third in the country, which is huge, so I'll look forward to bringing them in.
Good.
Well, I'll have some for next meeting, but not for.
Perfect, alright, we'll move on then to the meet. Two point four Harriman City Council, kind of boards and commissions discussion.
Yeah, we talked about this for a few council meetings now. Entitled to, we have several boards and committees that are appointed by you to serve in volunteer capacity. And those are listed in your packet. There's the Historical Society, Community Arts Council, Harriman Trails, Veterans and Military Advisory Committee, Harriman Off Highway Vehicle Committee, and the Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Board. And all of them have been kept up to date as to what is going on with this new nonprofit group. Um, I did send out an email yesterday and some of you probably received some responses, I'm guessing, as I did, about some concerns and being leery of, um, removing these boards from council-appointed boards and commissions and moving them to the friends of Harriman Group. Uh, my plan was to bring back a decision in January as to how you want to move forward with these boards and commissions as recommended. I, I just see a lot of mirroring going on. I don't want there to be confusion. I don't want staff resources to be used in both places. And so my recommendation, as it has been for the past, I don't know, six, nine, twelve months, is to um, remove these boards and commissions and have them move over to the nonprofit. Uh, along with the funds that are associated with each, each committee and board. I'm here to answer any questions. Have, I know that some of you have received emails as I have about some concerns to being leery. And to be honest with you, we started this conversation three years ago, two years ago. Um, and I was leery in the beginning too, but after working with the nonprofit board and be part of those meetings, I, I do feel comfortable with moving those forward, so.
Okay, so I received a couple of emails and phone calls. Um, I know their concerns are about having their voices hurt a lot of the times, and when they're in their small committee, they can. But a lot of the times we fail to meet because there's not a quorum or they're getting decisions, and so it's months and months and months. Where I think not only as a funding mechanism, but having more volunteership in the nonprofit can meet those needs a lot better. Where they don't need to have a specific quorum, they have the board there or they have whatever they are organized. They can probably get things done quicker and accept donations and accept other volunteer hourships or whatever they need, so. I think it's, I think it's just the rocky waters for a minute until they get comfortable with it, so.
I mean, change is not easy, um, of any kind, um, even if it's a good change, it still can be challenging. And, um, I think that there will be, um, people that are resistant to change that are going to look at this as a really bad thing. Other people will embrace the change and see it as a really good thing, and I leave that to, you know, individuals to make those choices how they do it, but, um, as council, I think we have to be mindful of the resources that we have, the time that we have, the people that we have to, to be involved with and overseeing and continuing to monitor and fund these type of activities and committees. And if there's a way to serve those needs in the community and identify those types of service opportunities and have the funding and decision-making taken off of staff and council, I think that's the right decision.
I think one of the biggest concerns that I heard was that the city's going to lose control. And of course, the city doesn't lose control. It's our property, it's our stuff, it's the budget that the city has, that they're going to be operating under. And so I tried to explain that, like, this group can't make any decisions on our property. That is solely in the hands of the city council, so they can make recommendations for things, but that doesn't mean it's going to have same as it.
It's starting with right now.
Yep, exactly.
I don't think we give our legislative authority over to other people.
I think one concern would only be if we have a group or board that doesn't feel like they're represented at the, you know, six months, or if we have a year check-in or however that looks like. My concern would be like the Veterans Committee, make sure that they're still in these events and volunteering and having that action. And, and then the other committees that I serve on, obviously the, the OHV and, you know, making sure that they're still moving and progressing forward. And, um, a lot of it, there's not a lot of controversy in any of these groups and forums, but, or areas, but there, if, if someone's not gung ho about it and it's not going to drive it forward, so they need some gung ho people in there, so.
I actually think this will help facilitate attracting those types of people because if it's viewed as being the city.
Yep.
The city will take care of it.
Yeah.
And that, that does happen a lot, and a lot falls on the person who makes this work.
And we've had, we've had discussions, I mean, just, let me give you an example. Um, as we're reviewing, um, unboxing all of the sound system equipment and getting it all set up and stuff. We're going through, realizing there's a couple of things we probably want to, want to exchange for some different things, like there's a different kind of microphone after looking at it and unboxing, okay, we need to make a change, so. We have to go back to the vendor and work all this stuff out and go. Well, as part of that, they discovered that there was a need for one of the groups to have, uh, some additional microphones that they wanted to have. And the cost for everything they want to do, it's like another $5,000. It's not an unreasonable expense for what they're asking for, but then again, now you have budget issues and modifications and who decides this and stuff, and it becomes this complex decision-making thing where when you have just a board that are seated, they can meet together and authorize those expenses without all the, you know, taxpayer concerns over and all of that kind of stuff. And, and I, I just think that that's just one of many, many examples where they can just take care of that stuff and they'll have the resources above and beyond what we can do through, you know, um, fundraising, through other revenues they're generating, through all that kind of stuff. I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do.
Barry, do you have any comments?
I would just say, I mean, I didn't get the emails that I think everybody else got. I only got one. But Jared, I'll be brief, I promise, but just to the arts, to those that are concerned, this decision was to support those groups more. This was not, I mean, if there's anything, it's we believe more in these things, to support them, to get them more funding, more ability to expand. This is fully supporting all of this effort, so this is not an effort to, you know, to quiet anybody or to change things. This is just to enhance and just the council's support of saying, go, do, you know, do better, do bigger. We know, you know, there's more out there, so, yes.
And I, I just, I think that for the, for the friends to understand, the people that are on these committees that the cities appointed, these are some of the most interested, motivated, educated, involved residents of the community and all of these things, and they, their experience and background and motivation and should all be, you know, leveraged by the new organization to, to bring that in and, and use that.
I think it will empower them to find more like-minded people.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not the perception that this, it's a city function, so you take care of it if it's, we're doing this and we need volunteers, I think.
And we've seen that in other jurisdictions with, uh, one we come in, moving Thafrad Draper in Bluffdale, they, they're, a lot of their events and our stuff is all done by volunteership and it's, it's an amazing turnout and succession.
And, you know, I, I, I think there's argument for some things, you know, I, I, um, you guys got the email about the trails thing and I, I, those arguments don't fall on deaf ears, right? I understand, but I, I guess I'm not persuaded that we should carve that out of this decision right now.
But this is.
I don't see it. I just not say that what we're doing, there's not issues that arise. You can find the things to change along the way, just like you do with any process. I'm comfortable moving forward with these recommendations.
Well, we, and, and we still have the perches, at least for a while, right? So there's, there's things that aren't going quite right. We have.
Is your preference for this to come back in special infection or consent to do that?
Some importance change?
Yeah.
So it may, it may just be regular talent, it'll be nice.
I think it should be noticed so that there's a chance for public comment about it.
And all of the volunteers, like I said, were emailed yesterday, told about this meeting, they've been, they've been emailed about the previous application period for the friends group. They've been encouraged to join as part of the subcommittees, so hopefully we do see some of our current. Hopefully we do see some of our current volunteers transition over, and I think that just makes everything so much stronger, so.
Good. Anything else, Lauren? No one? You can move on to point six discussion.
Okay, so similar to last year, we have an opportunity to apply for corridor preservation funds, which is an opportunity through the Salt Lake County Preservation Fund, which is, uh, selected by the Cog Public Works Committee. So we have some possible projects we could apply for, and we wanted to come to the council to discuss, uh, what our priorities are for those projects. So there are some requirements, not any road, well, so it has to be for road corridor preservation, and not any road can be, is eligible for this, so it has to be part of the regional transportation plan, which is the plan that Wasatch Front puts together with all of the different master plans, cities, and UDOT's plans, and kind of identifies the most important regional connections. And then they list that over ten years, twenty years, thirty years on, on these regional connections. So it has to be on that regional transportation plan, and it has to be in a phase one or phase two project, which means they expect it to be built in the next ten years or the next twenty years. Phase three is thirty years out, and so that is not eligible, and usually that's more conceptual at that point. And then the other. Yeah, the other requirement is that we have to have a willing seller letter from the property owner to apply saying, and this alludes to, to other properties that the, we're not planning to use condemnation on this, on this property. And if we do have to transition to that, then we lose that funding that's committed towards the project, so it has to be willing seller. And then we can only purchase privately owned property, so can't buy it from another city or from a public entity. It has to be from a privately owned, owner. So here's the, the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, and the four projects that are possibilities for us to apply for. The green appears that we've already applied and been successful and received funds or, or been told that we're awarded those funds. So last year, sixty-four hundred west in this area was awarded to us. Um, and additionally, a portion of the Main Street right-of-way was awarded to us. What they did last year was award this whole thing, and then they had a little bit of money left over, and it didn't cover all of what we applied for, but they said, hey, have the rest of it. We don't have another project that this can fund, so they, they essentially partially funded this one. And then seventy-three hundred west north of Main Street was a few years ago, we got, uh, money to, to fund that. And then a hundred and thirty-eighth was a little bit unique. We were only asking for and funding more than what was supposed to be dedicated by the developer anyways. Um, so we got just a little bit of money there, um, but not much. So that leaves us with, uh, some other projects that are on the RTP that haven't been funded or applied for. Main Street's done and built, so we don't need any right-of-way right here. But there are some other projects and the colors, so red is phase one and blue is phase two. And this is Wasatch Front phasing, not necessarily our phasing. I think we could probably all agree, all of these are probably phase one projects within the next ten years. But, so we put those together, so number one is a hundred and thirty-fourth south from six thousand west is sixty-four hundred west. Um, so this would be a project to widen us from three lanes and even a certain section, it's two lanes there to, uh, go five lanes. It's already five lanes to about here, at least the right-of-way is. And we would need additional right-of-way to carry that all the way to sixty-four hundred west. So that's, that's a project that we could apply for. Six thousand west or Pioneer Street, that is another project where we have, uh, various residents that front the road that own more than uh, what we need for the right-of-way, so we would need to purchase individual, uh, pockets of frontage for certain property owners um, for that project. And that would be, again, that's a two-lane road without curb gutter, sidewalk, that, that project. We'd need the right-of-way to make it go to three lanes, curb gutter, sidewalk installed with that project. Number three is seventy-three hundred west, so we can completed widening this north portion of seventy-three hundred west. This is for this kind of middle bottom section. It's actually widened from here to here and from here to here, and we're actually working on, well, we finalized the design for that. And we actually have it budgeted in our budget for next year to, uh, build that, that road. We don't have all the right-of-way yet, and we are actually just at the beginning, uh, talking to property owners on that, so. So that's another option. And then finally, the fourth option is still seventy-three hundred west, but it's up a little bit north in the Olympia area. And so this is the U-111 realignment that we've had many discussions about, and this is the seventy-three hundred west road connecting up to that. And we can get into a little bit of pros and cons for each of these, but that's the overview on, on these projects. Okay, so a hundred and thirty-fourth south, number one. The, the difficulties with this one is that you're affecting a ton of individual parcels, so it's sixteen parcels that we would have to get a willing seller from. And if we got eight, we could apply for eight, but essentially each parcel we would have to get a willing seller for to be eligible for funding. And so with the estimated, uh, cost and square footage, we'd be applying for about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Six, six thousand west, this is again from Harriman Boulevard, Harriman Main Street. It's a little bit more, uh, area, but less parcels, so twelve parcels. Um, about double the area though, and about double the cost, um, that we would apply for, so two hundred and thirty-two thousand approximately, and then seventy-three hundred west, it would be, again, a lot of parcels, fourteen parcels, about the same area as six thousand west and about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then seventy-three hundred west in the Olympia area, it's a little bit simpler, it's just two parcel, two parcels, same property owner. Um, but it's a massive area, so it'd be approximate, almost six acres and our estimated cost at two point three million dollars we would apply for. So now let me go back, so this is the scoring criteria that the committee is supposed to use for, uh, corridor preservation. So we went through, just like last year, and tried to score it ourselves based on their crito, criteria. And these are where the, the scores that came in based on their criteria, so fifty-three for one thirty-fourth, forty-seven for six thousand west, forty-six for seventy-three hundred west at the south end, and fifty-five for seventy-three hundred west. So that just goes through kind of all of their, their scenarios that, that we would look at.
The. Can I ask this real quick?
Yes.
Is that the same order that they appear in our, um, CIP?
Uh, so, no, this, so this seventy-three hundred west is actually booked for next year in our budget and our CIP to build, so that would, as far as construction timing, seventy-three hundred west comes into our budget first. As far as scoring for our overall CIP, I believe.
It just, it just seems interesting to me that the one we're going to build is that we're, we're already allocating money to build is the one we, and we don't have the rights of way yet.
Yeah.
So it would seem to me it would be a priority for us to secure those rights of way as soon as we possibly can to carry forth our budget planning. If we don't,
Yeah.
we've allocated money for a project out of order. And, and, and it just seems like this is the lowest score, but it's the one we need.
But I, I, I think, Jerry, we would, if we don't get the funding, we will have to buy those as part of that budget. This is.
Yeah, if we can get this, then that.
Again, I'm just.
Yeah, so that, that's a good point. Seventy-three hundred west, we actually have it in this fiscal year budget to purchase right-of-way. This would be essentially offsetting that and using that now towards construction the next year, we, or we could ship those funds uh, somewhere else, so we, it is programmed to buy the right-of-way, but the.
Rather use this money.
We could, yeah, if we could get that money from another source, then we're not, we're still paying it, but we're being reimbursed for that.
Do we have to pick a project or please submit a form?
Um, so that's, that's a good point. So they have about four million dollars usually roughly to award throughout the Salt Lake County. Um, and so typically they, they award three to five projects depending on, on the, the, uh, the applications. It would be, so if we added these all up, you're about just over three million, so that'd be three-fourths of the cost, but. But, yeah, but just because you apply for it, they, they can pick and choose what they want to fund, right? The other point to, that I want to make is this section is seventy-three hundred west, and like, feel free to jump in, is part of the Olympia Pid, so technically we are not needing to buy that right-of-way at any point. This would, they would be required to dedicate it when they went to build it. So this, we all are, we're on the hook to buy at some point. This is not necessarily our cost to buy at this point.
But it's, if we could get reimbursed or we could get money from the preservation corridor.
I'd submit all three and whatever we think is out of order and do it. I mean, last year we submitted one, the, the seventy-three, the.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four west up there, and like, I mean, they awarded like seventy-five thousand to Conwood Heights and a hundred and six thousand or something else, and then they awarded two point something million to Harriman, and, and it was just because we applied for it. And so I say you apply for the one. Yeah.
The group that kind of decides that. I will say that I think that they do try to, because there's limited funds, they try to move that. Right? So we had agreed years ago to help Bluffdale some theirs and Jordan, so we do. I mean, the mayor's on that committee, they do kind of work together and try to year to year. Significant projects while still spreading around what they can. I mean, we all know how these do take more funds. We kind of have to work together that way as well.
Yeah, and that's a good point. It's not only that the committee is aware of where these projects have been funded in the past, it's also built into their scoring, so if a community hasn't received funding in the last five years, they automatically get a ten-point boost on their, on their scoring. But, and that's in addition to the committee actually discussing, discussing it after the scores, uh, come out, so. Yeah, so we're, I would say we're a little bit on the end of, hey, you've just been funded. We may not see the funding that we've seen the last couple of years, but you never know, just like.
It's a part of what we ask for, is to take those things into account, realistic.
Exactly.
And sometimes the smaller projects are easier because you can give at the, at the end, oh, we still have this much.
Sometimes they break it down and give you partial, and they might say, well, you're asking for two hundred thousand, we can give you a hundred, is that okay? Um, looking at the CIP though, just to come back to that, I think seventy-three hundred west ranks the highest because it's obviously scheduled already on the budget, but out of the next two, six thousand is higher than thirty-four. So one thirty-six and a half is the score of six thousand and nine, a hundred and five is.
Was they're waiting longer, I think that's like a twenty.
Waiting a long time.
It's been longer in the queue.
Just for information there, so.
Awesome.
Because they might ask for our priority when we apply for these.
Yeah, so I guess our, our question is which ones and what's the priority would, would we like to, to, to go with?
If we could move the CIP, it would essentially be those top three reversed.
Reversed, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
If we put three as one and one as three, and they come back and say, look, if you have a thousand, then where do we want to put it?
On the one we're building next?
Yeah, the one we're building next is the one we need for.
And I don't think they've announced when this is going to be applied for yet. We just wanted to get ahead of that. They had a meeting, they're changing some of the criteria on how it's scored and who's eligible for it. So I think they're trying to buckle down on developers wishing to get more money.
That's good.
Okay.
Everybody needs.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, moving on to point seven.
Okay, so, yeah, jump into another project that we do have some corridor preservation money for. Uh, Harriman Main Street, Harriman Highway, uh, one thirty-one south. We've got a, a lot of names for this road, but we've talked about it many times as well. Um, background, we were granted money through the state, uh, for fifteen years, eight hundred thousand per year, and to make a substantial project out of that, we bonded for it upfront and have about ten and a half million available for this project. So if you recall, back in July, we came and said, hey, we think the scope of the project's going to be a little bit too much for the funds that, that we have. Let's, uh, see if we want to scale it down, so the decision was uh, to go from an eighty-foot cross-section to a sixty-eight-foot cross-section. The only difference there is the shoulders were, were smaller, right? And then at the intersections, we actually widened back out to the, to the eighty-foot, uh, cross-section. The other decision that was made, uh, a huge cost is to convert the power to underground. So we said, hey, we'll relocate it, but if we keep it aerial, that's no longer a cost to the city, it's a cost to Rocky Mountain Power to relocate. So we moved forward with that. Oh, and then we also said, yes, we want to keep the landscaping and the park strips for the project. Um, so we went forward with that. Final design is completed. We've pre-qualified for contractors and it's out for bid currently. Um, and we are planning, the bid, the bid opening is planned for December twenty-second, so coming up here pretty soon. Um, but with our final design, we still aren't sure how far we can go with our funds. And, uh, construction bids have looked more promising lately than they have in the past. Um, but it is, it, it's still volatile, so because of that, we built in uh, segments of the bid like we've done on other projects that we've talked about. So starting point at sixty-two fifty west or where the roadway improvements end right now, curb gutter and sidewalk, and carried it to past Danzy Boulevard as base bid section. And then from there to the, the curve in the road essentially, uh, bid alt one, and then from there to seventy-three hundred west is bid alt two. Um, I should say the base bid, one of the big, uh, motivators behind this project is a safe walkable area along this corridor. Um, especially to the elementary, but in general, a, a walking route through here. And so the base bid, if we only have funds to fund the base bid, it will include a uh, asphalt path for two seventy-three hundred west. So regardless of if we just award the roadway improvements to this point, which would be sidewalk on both sides of the road, it would then transition to a asphalt trail to connect seventy-three hundred west to that, that point, so regardless, we will have a pedestrian connectivity from the east end of the project to the west end of the project. Now, now update here are the, we have a consultant that actually works with, uh, a former contractor that submits mock bids. a former contractor that submits mock bids. Essentially, they call suppliers and get the prices that contractors get. And then they submit a bid ahead of the the actual bid opening. So that's where we're at today. We've got those prices back. This is that base bid section plus the asphalt path to get us to seventy-three hundred west. This is base bid plus bid alt one, base bid plus bid alt two. So here are the prices coming in for those for those bids. So we have ten and a half available, almost ten point six now. And then a a big portion of this project is some waterline work. And so the water fund is able to pay for those and those improvements. And then we have a few outside grants, like we talked about corridor preservation. We we've been told that the the project would be eligible for tree grant money for the street trees that we're planting. And then also we're we're realigning some manholes for South Valley Sewer. When we redo the road, we'd have to do that anyways. But they had told us they would reimburse us for those costs. So not a ton of money. With all of those combined, we're somewhere in the hundred thousand realm of extra funds. So with that, that's our total estimate, not estimated, that's our total budget available. And this is where the base bid price is coming in. So they're right about even. And from what we've seen, the the bids have been pretty competitive the last couple of months around for for other prod similar projects. So we feel pretty good that this is gonna come in close to, if not within our our budget that we have to. So that leads to the discussion if we're okay awarding just base bid or if we have a priority to shift funds around to get this project a little bit further. And the reason we're coming before the bid is so that we have an idea at the bid opening. And then we can talk to the contractor after the bid opening to know exactly what direction we want to go. Either way, we'll we'll be coming back in January to confirm that construction contract with them. So here are some options for additional funding. We have a couple of different funds, and I don't want to get too much into the details of of these funds. But there's options for adding money to the project and it's it's based on kind of priorities. So this option one is essentially we've over budgeted for a reimbursement for Danzy Boulevard. So that one is is pretty easy to say, hey, we have a reimbursement agreement for this much. And we have this budgeted for almost double as much. And that was, it looked like just because it was copied in two fiscal years instead of one. And this project will span both fiscal years, so we could use that seven thousand, seven hundred thousand in excess towards the project. Option two, we alluded to this, seventy-three hundred west is slated for construction next year. If the council had a desire to, we could shift shift that three million dollars that is planned for that construction towards this project. That project then would fall back into the line of trying to find funding, right? Seventy-three hundred west.
Since you have to take, it's almost option four. You're taking all those projects, you're sliding them all back over the years.
Exactly. And then we've and so there is about one point seven million dollars for property acquisition that we've been holding for the area near Miller Crossing. That has been a placeholder in the the capital projects budget. But that's a consideration. If we wanted to go away from that, we could shift funds towards the project as well.
So the only problem with that one point seven million is it's actually money from a land sale or game point, which should go towards that loan. We need to start paying back. So while it's available, it is, it's essentially, it's a loan. So it's just how do we?
We we do have to pay that loan back by twenty twenty-five according to the loan agreement we made with the. And.
The water.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that one has some strings attached to it, a little bit messier. And then, like Nathan said, the other option is we look at all of our capital projects, look at our CIP overall and just re-rank everything. If the priority is Main Street completed all the way to seventy-three hundred west, we could commit all the funds that are necessary and then reprogram the all the other projects off of that. So yeah, there's the the summary of options we can we can hand, we can use. Like I said, this one's a little bit more messy. And then this one would essentially be how much we need to to do Main Street. We could reprogram other projects. So essentially, what we're looking for is, are we okay with just base bid? Do we want to look at these options for base bid plus bid alt one? Or do we want to look at these options for completing the whole project? Or if the the project comes in over the base bid, do we actually come back and take things out? So we're, we don't have to add funds to to build the project. Those are those are kind of the options we have at this point, so. And again, we'll be, we'll coming, this will all come back for a, if no matter what your decision is, we'd have to come back for a budget amendment. Unless it's number one and we come in under budget, then that would be the only time we wouldn't come back for a budget amendment. But we would come back for the construction contract approval from from, yes, so. Yeah, just maybe some some.
Exactly. It's one, and if it's not, then we have that discussion.
Because I I'd say I don't, I don't think we will, I think we've shrunk the elements of the project down about as far as we really want to go. I don't think we want to go below where we're at. So hopefully the the bid comes in at or below what we're estimating. That would be, that'd be good. I I'm I'm really hoping that twenty percent contingency is extra healthy and there'd be some of that leftover too that we could.
Yeah, that's that's a good discussion point that we have twenty percent contingency. That is for change orders, things that we find in the field that are added later that the design didn't catch. So on a reconstruct process, you usually have a higher one because you have existing utilities, property owners that you're affecting. So twenty percent's right in the middle of what you typically see. It'd be fifteen to twenty-five percent on a reconstruct. If it was a brand new green filled road and you're just going through a farm or something, a little bit simpler, usually you can bring that down to fifteen percent, ten percent. If the bid came in like this, thirteen five, and we have thirteen four, we could be a little bit flexible with that contingency and say, hey, we can fund this. And now we have eighteen percent contingency. So we have a little bit of flexibility. I would not recommend going under fifteen percent contingency for this project at all. Just because there are a ton of existing utilities that make this a little bit complicated.
So and on the steward board, we saw quite a few of our bids for next first and second quarter come in significantly low for competition. And for worrisomeness, right? They want their projects lined up. I I'm assuming we're gonna see this coming a little bit lower and we might get alt one included in that.
Yeah, that's what I hope for too, yeah.
Even with that seven hundred thousand, maybe reimbursement funds that we flip over there. But then you're like, is it worth another three million to finish it, right? Instead of remobilize.
Mobilization, yeah.
Yeah, how much more cost per linear foot or square foot, however you roadmap that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, right now, and this is kind of built in with the contingency. So the further you go, the more contingency you have. But you can see, yeah, it's about a a three hundred dollar million, a three million dollar to finish the project from base bid to bid alt is the estimate. And so.
And that's if we do it at one time, though. If we come back in three to five years, we're gonna look at five, six million dollars for that small section.
Well, I I again, I think it's all a little bit, we'll have to wait and see how it comes out. But I would, you know, betting man, I think we'll probably get close to base plus alt one.
Yeah, but I I hate to take the whole CIP and bump it three, five years and get those ones that are.
Let's see what happens. If we get down and we need and we, maybe we have some that could go to alt two and it's not all of it. We just have a smaller portion to move. Maybe we can have that discussion.
So so the plan then would be to have this on the work meeting as well as the regular meeting?
Yes, in January.
On the, because of the timing of the bid, we have to make that award. So we'll schedule that and and put this early enough in the work meeting that you can discuss hash it out for. And then yeah, have a final decision.
Okay.
Work meeting after? Time's great, yeah.
All right. That looks like it's it. Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
So again. Thanks, everybody.
You gotta change your thing this.